Call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening, and it's a warm summer sunny evening, woo-hoo. So we will try to be as speedy as possible. So with that, Mrs. Freed, would you please take role?
Madam President, all are present.
Thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next. Go to our first action item, which we turn to Dr. Teagarden.
Thank you, Madam President. To begin this conversation this evening, I'm going to, with your indulgence, I'm going to read an email that I sent to you about an hour ago. And I'll start this the same way I started the email. I apologize for this 11th hour communication. You, over the past couple of weeks, with the proposal that we put on the table for salary and benefit packages and compensation for all of our employee groups outside the bargaining unit, we've had an interesting email dialogue, and you've raised some really good questions that we've been trying to wrestle down for you. And as of the 11th hour, when I wrote this email, I'm not totally satisfied that we've answered those questions 100% to my satisfaction. So let me read the email and tell you what I'm... One action I'm performing myself this evening, I'm withdrawing part of that proposal that we put on the table. And I'll provide the rationale. The other portion, because it's not applicable to some of the questions that you raised, I'm still going to leave on the table and would hope that you would take action this evening. So with that, let me read this email that you received. "I apologize for the 11th hour communication but felt it was necessary. Thanks to the questions you have raised over the past two weeks in regards to the proposal we placed before you at your last meeting, I am going to withdraw a portion of that proposal. As you know, significant changes in statute relating to bargaining, evaluation, definition of factors to be included in establishing salary schedules and so forth, put us in somewhat uncharted water when it comes to the kinds of questions you have raised. While I think we've got it right, I'm not 100% certain. And the thing I most want to avoid is to have you approve something only to have to consider revising it at some later time. For that reason, I am withdrawing the portion of our proposal dealing with administrators with the intention of completely resolving any remaining questions so that we can bring it back before you at your meeting on July 22nd. I would like for a portion of the proposal relating to all other employee groups to be considered for action on tonight's agenda. As you know, the same questions are not applicable in determining compensation for these positions. I continue to believe it would be most helpful to us and would be most appropriate to approve our proposal for both 2012-13 retroactively and 2013-14. However, I do understand concerns some of you have raised, have expressed regarding our financial ability to meet even these rather minimal obligations. Therefore, if you deem it necessary, discussion and action on the second year of the proposal could be tabled or postponed and also placed on the July 22nd agenda." So that's first two parts. One is action, withdrawing a motion, withdrawing a portion of the proposal. And the other is placed before you for your consideration.
Okay. Well, we'll begin with, thank you, Dr. Teagarden. And second, do we get, can I get a motion on the table to approve the recommendation to withdraw the administrative staff from this proposal?
I don't believe that requires action.
The entire portion of what you've proposed?
Just the withdrawal portion, I don't think requires your action. I've just, I've just taken that off the table. So the only thing that requires action is whatever you want to do with the, with the portion of the proposal remaining before you.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds great.
I'll move to, I'll move to move forward. The recommendation as stated minus the administrative section that Dr. Teagarden pulled back.
Okay. May I get a second?
For discussion purposes, I'll offer a second.
Yes. Okay. Discussion.
Actually, Ms. Vanamerg, if I could, I would actually like to start our discussion by making amendment to the, to the motion on the table, to make a joint motion, actually. I'd like to amend the motion to include only the Item 3 under the recommendation, provide a 1% retroactive schedule increase plus an increment or equivalent for 2012-13, except support staff increase would be from January 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2013. Because support staff increases would move from a calendar year to a fiscal year. And then the second part of my joint motion would be to postpone the remainder of that port, of that main motion to the July 22nd meeting in two weeks.
Thank you for your motion.
Greg has to accept.
Well, we all, yeah. May I get a second on that motion to bring it to discussion?
Again, for discussion purposes, I'll be happy to second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Discussion.
This might help explain it.
Are you going to go down and get that one?
No, I'm not going to amend the amendment. I want to explain the amendment. The first part, actually, the recommendation number three deals with, obviously, the retroactive aspect, hours already worked, days already worked by our support staff, administrators, nurses, and student service coordinators. And as we know, this retro offer is in line with our last best offer for those under our teacher contract. That right now is tied up in legal constraints, let's say. But while that's going on, I don't see any reason why we can't go ahead with a raise in line with, for those others, employees in line with that last best offer. So that's the first part of my, of my amended joint motion. And the second part has to do with, with like Dr. Teagarden said, I've, I've heard comments from board members and just angst on how do we balance this very decreased new money from the state and district expenses along with employees' individual own personal expenses, and how do we move forward with this? Personally, since I've been on the board, there's never been a 13% cash balance. So in my mind, the recommendation that's going forward, actually, I don't, we can't keep doing that with what the state's giving us. We can't go forward with recurring expenses in a fund that doesn't recur, but that that's enough of a balance to me, that in the short term, that's okay. But as a board, I don't, I don't think we're all, we still feel like we need to balance some of those new laws and those financial restraints, and I think we're still feeling some angst about that. So that's why I propose to strike that. However, I do think people need to be able to plan for their futures, us as a district and personal people, so that in two weeks, I think we can work through this and get some advice and have that vote and discussion at that point.
Thank you.
Can she clarify what her amendment was?
Yes. Could you please clarify your amendment, Mrs. Hackett?
Yeah, it's, it's two points. First is to just move forward tonight with the recommendation number three that has to do with the...
Just support staff.
Pardon me?
Just support staff.
Yes, excuse me. Just the support staff.
I don't think it's on the table right now, the support staff, because the administration...
But that's true. But I did say administration, you're right. Just the support staff as it was said.
Okay. That's because in your explanation, you...
That's a good point. Yes, just the support staff for the retroactive only. And then the second part is just to postpone, not to table indefinitely, because I think we do owe decisions, people these decisions, to postpone until two weeks from now to get the answers that we've, to the questions that people have asked.
Other questions, discussion? Mr. Phillips?
Yes, Tricia, could, I'm still just a little bit foggy on how your amendment compares to the motion that you offered originally.
The motion to offer, to go forth originally is basically an entire recommendation minus just administrators. What my motion is, is to not move forward with recommendations 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, but to just move forward with recommendation number 3 as it relates to the support staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I have not, and tell me if I'm misunderstanding, but I'm not hearing, the conversation I'm hearing doesn't have to do with the retro, the retroactive increase, but has to do with parameters going forward. How do we balance our funds and how do we make sure that they fall within the new law of compensation?
Right.
Other discussion? Mrs. Freed?
I'd like to say I'm much happier with this proposal than the one that was on the table. I think we have different groups of employees, and basically it breaks down into, we have certified staff and we have non-certified staff. And certified staff is everyone pretty much that has a teacher's license, and that includes administrators and some other people. Our nurses and everyone, and nurses and our secretaries and our janitors, they work very, very hard to make our system work. So I really feel that going forward with this, just providing them the retroactive 1%, which is not a lot, we should give it a lot more, but, you know, times are, it's better than nothing. And I feel much better about that because then we can get an idea around what the law legally says we can do with our certified staff.
Other discussion? Mr. Phillips?
I do have a question. On number three, we're talking about a 1% increase plus an increment or equivalent. My question is, what would that increment or equivalent amount to as a percentage? So the total percentage increase would be what?
I think we provided that, and I don't have it with me, but I'm sure, yeah. Roger, I think, can pull that off the top of his head.
Pretty close, I think. I believe the steps for our support staff are about 2.5%. So then, so if you were getting, if you were eligible for a step increase, you would, the sum total would be, be about 3.5%, I believe. Those at the top of the schedule would get just the 1%.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have a total cost in our...
I didn't quite hear it all, but...
Those that would be eligible for an increment, the increments are about 2.5%.
Okay.
Therefore, if we, so it'd be 3.5%. And then those at the top of the schedule, the most senior employees, would be 1%.
On the LBO for the teachers, what was the percentage that we're offering in our final?
The teachers' LBO consisted of a 2% increase. Everybody's salary would go up 2% except we eliminated the 1% 401 or, I believe it's 401A. So their net would be a 1% increase.
I think it was the 403B.
403B. So, so their net increase would be 1%. And in addition to that, they had a pool of about a half a percent, $275,000 for a stipend and another $275,000 for a bonus pool. The difference between the two is, is the bonus pool would, the amount that they would receive would vary depending on whether they were effective or highly effective, whereas a stipend, it would be the same.
Okay. Because they, the way I looked at it, as I looked at the LBO today, there is no, there are no step increases on the LBO.
There are not. The best offer, the earlier offers that we had, had provided did include a, what looked a whole lot like a step increase. It was, amongst other things, the proposal included a $1,500 increase for every teacher except those at the current top of the schedule.
Okay, so...
But not the, not, the LBO did not include that.
Right. So we're, are we offering a 1.5% for, for teachers?
Approximately, it's 1% of the schedule and a total of about a half a percent, or I'm sorry, another percent, really, $550,000. So it's really about 2%. 1% increase and then 2.2, again, a bonus pool of $275,000 and another $275,000 pool for stipend.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is that is not recurring. So in other words, the 1% is only, the only thing that will be recurring in their salary.
The only thing that would be somewhat assured to recur, yes.
Okay. So in other words, they don't have the increment that we're saying we're going to be giving to everybody else.
That's correct.
So if we're trying to make everything equal, then shouldn't we be giving all other employees the 1% rather than the, and not the incremental increase?
Well, depends on how equal you want it to be.
I'd like to jump in on that one because our original offer that was to the, the association included all of that, and it was at their discretion whether to commit to that particular offer that we made as a board or to not. The only reason we'd go to the last best offer is if we have to go into fact finding.
Which we did.
Could you repeat that?
Yes, I'm repeating that.
Could you turn your microphone on?
It is.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, what I'm saying is that it's, the original offer that the board had to the teachers' association, to the CCA, did include basically 3% because it include the incremental in a $1,500 that Roger had just stated, as well as the, our 1% and the stipend and the pool. We didn't have to go, I mean, that is what we offered them, so that's what we were thinking to offer in this proposal to everybody else in the district excluding the administration. Because we may be going into fact finding, it hasn't been initiated, we're just still in limbo because of the ULP that was filed. That wasn't our doing. We chose to offer, and now we're in a, in this limbo. So I think it's not really fair to say that we didn't offer. It was out there.
Yes, but what I'm saying is what you're offering the other staff now is what you offered before the LBO then?
No, it's less than what we offered before, but it's more than the last best offer.
Mrs. Freed?
I think that's just where we might have a case of misunderstanding because I was under, I was, I was under the conception that this was to match the last best offer because we were sure that's what we would be giving the teachers if, if our LBO is accepted, and so therefore that's what we would model this one. So we're not modeling it after the LBO.
No. Not, not, precisely, no.
It's, it's very, very close to that, though. As Roger said, it's, it's somewhere between. It's closer to the, the last best offer than the final best offer. But it is, it is, because it includes for those groups, the support staff groups, our lowest paid employees, a very modest increase in the salary schedule and a relatively modest increment increase. They average about 2.5%. And what is the cost, Roger, the total cost?
You had it, you had it or sheet? Let's see.
No, that's before.
That's the, that's the everybody. I'm thinking the end of the...
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we had it right out there.
Well, I, I believe, I was looking because we've got support staff and administration, we had everybody, but for support staff, it's about $74,000.
Total impact, $74,000 for 2012-13 retroactive year.
Mr. Phillips?
First, like Tricia, I'm pleased that we have a 13% cash balance, and I know that will diminish no matter what we do, and I know that we'll find good uses for that money. No question about it, you know? But of course, that's largely irrelevant to our current discussion, which is all about recurring salary expenses. I think all of us want, want to give every employee, you know, as much as we can, and I think we all want to deal with our employees equitably. We don't wish to seem to favor one group over another. Historically, as I understood Roger's history lesson the other day, that we, we traditionally have been able to do that sort of thing, where we'd pretty much advance all of our employees together. It may be a dim fading hope, but I, I would like to cling to that if we possibly can. I'm saying I'd rather not piecemeal our efforts here to improve the wages and benefits of our employees. We're so close to being able to come to a resolution, I think, of last year's contract, and we're about three weeks away from beginning negotiations on this next year's contract. Whatever we decide is going to have a retroactive provision so that whether we decide tonight or two weeks from tonight or six weeks from tonight, no employee will lose a dime because they will get ultimately what's coming to them. So I guess I'd like to speak against both the amendment and the motion. I realize that it's a good-hearted attempt to, to do as well as we can for, for support staff, and I fully support that. I fully support that, but I just think that the complications that we buy ourselves are unfortunate. And I would just, I would like to see us put the entire matter on the table and to deal with all of our employees as much as possible at one time and not have to deal with this subgroup and that subgroup and so forth.
Okay. I'd like to comment if you all don't mind. I would like you to maybe perhaps define the complications that you see moving forward with providing a retro for all the other employee groups that do not hold a teaching I'm frustrated with the way negotiations have turned out so far, but I don't necessarily feel that all the other employee groups in the district should be held hostage to another employee group not negotiating a contract. And I struggle with having to follow the pattern that we've used in the past.
I think we all feel that frustration.
I'm certainly sensitive to what you say. I mean, it is kind of hard to think about holding them hostage because I'm disappointed we don't have a contract too. But I do agree with Greg in his comments that if we postpone this to the next time, July 22nd, so we all have time to think about it and possibly move forward then with at least a support staff increase, I think we would be better off. I kind of agree with him that it's, you know, we love our support staff. Like I said, I'm really happy that with the number three thing, I would be supportive of it, but I don't see that it's a really, would be a problem if we tabled it for two weeks.
Any more discussion on this topic? Okay. Then we need to move to Mrs. Hackett's original motion, which is on the table.
First, we, first, do we vote on the amended motion?
We're going to be voting on your amendment to the motion. Yes. To see if we're going to be moving forward with that. So all in favor of supporting Mrs. Hackett's motion of including number three and postponing the rest of the, the proposal until July 22nd? All in favor?
Aye.
I think just two of us opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Then we go back to the original motion made by Dr. Teagarden. Other discussion? Yes, please.
I would like to move to table the current motion until, until our next business meeting. And it's not a motion that requires discussion, it's just simply a vote.
Well, it still will require discussion. If you're motioning to table...
I don't think a motion to table requires discussion. Maybe there's a parliamentary...
Are you postponing to a specific date, and if so, we need a motion?
As you wish.
Are you post, are you, is your motion to postpone this until July 22nd?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in, yes?
I would just like to go on the record in saying I'm in, in favor of postponing so that the board feels like they have all their answers, questions answered. But I, but I don't support not giving someone an increase for, no matter what employee group they are, for days already worked.
Well, it's retro.
It's retroactive.
Call a question? Means your vote.
I appreciate what that means, Mr. Phillips. Any other discussion? All in favor of post, of postponing the vote until July 22nd?
Aye.
Nay? Four to one. Okay. Moving ahead, Nursing Service Partnership?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to bring back for the board's consideration for action this evening, a proposal that we discussed two weeks ago for us to partner with St. Vincent's Nursing Services to fill four open nursing positions in our district that have occurred since the end of the school year due to retirements, resignations, and other, well, that probably captures everything, retirements and resignations. This is a, our intention with this is, is to, to expose ourselves to a broader applicant pool than we have in the past, obviously, than to have resources, access to resources in the medical community, which St. Vincent's certainly provides us. And the, the most important thing that we think can happen from this recommendation is to provide the most appropriate nursing services to our students possible, as is possible. There were some questions last time that we met that were raised about liability, those sorts of things, and I've been in communication with St. Vincent's over the last couple of weeks, and I've also sought the advice of, of our legal counsel. We haven't had the final answer on that yet, but those wheels are in motion, and I would expect for, if there are any things that need to be worked out with the, the contract language, that those things would occur, you know, in reasonable time, and David Day's office will be supporting us on that. So I would bring that recommendation back to you this evening for action, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the board might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman.
Yes. Yes. Are we discussing it? Because we need to...
Oh, nobody motioned yet. Whoops, sorry. So move.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, this is, thank you. You just mentioned the contract, and I think we discussed that the last time, that their contract will be with St. Vincent, not with us. Is that correct?
That's correct. These employees would be employees of St. Vincent's, not of Carmichael Schools.
Okay. So is the contract that you're working out, is that work, you're working that out through David Day? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So their, will their contract be in line with what our nurses are currently doing? Or will their services be different? I mean, will their contract look different?
No, I think, and I, and I might be, I might be confusing the word contract with you, Mrs. Nows. The work that they perform, I think, will be very similar, if not identical, to our present nurses in terms of...
Okay, just my thought.
The services they provide to students and, and our staff in some ways, the number of days that they work, the number of hours that they work, those things will all be similar. The contract that I allude to is, you know, really between the district and St. Vincent's with regards to this partnership.
Oh, okay.
Not an individual contract between the district and an individual nurse.
Okay.
So I apologize for the confusion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Other discussion question? Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Newman, I'm sure that... Mr. Newman, I'm sure that this contract has a provision for termination like most other contracts. What's on my mind is, just thinking about school nurses in our system have, in most cases, we've seen quite a lot of longevity, which I think is a good thing.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to trust that administrators will keep a close watch on turnover with these partnership positions, and if it develops that there's a greater rate of turnover than what administrators are comfortable with, that, well, we'll reevaluate at that time.
That's a, that's a very good point, Mr. Phillips. Yes, your point on the termination, again, I've just recently received information on this, and this may still be negotiable to some degree. I think I alluded last, at our last meeting, that we were in hopes that we could have about a 60-day termination clause, and I think kind of the standard proposal from St. Vincent's is maybe a little bit longer than that. It's not a lot longer than that, but absolutely, Mr. Phillips, if we felt like, I think that would be a concern we would share. You know, if we felt like there were a lot of turnover in those positions that St. Vincent's were helping his staff, that wouldn't be a concern just for us and our students. I would think that that would be a concern for the St., I reached to my St. Vincent's folks in the back who have done this in other districts, I'm sure that would be a shared concern, and would certainly be something that we would want to address. But if, if we had to get to the point of a termination of that contract, I think we could do that with due notice.
Other questions?
I have one more.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And last week, we talked about the benefits to our current staff. What would be the benefits to our, to the current nurses, or the nurses we have on staff now? Will they, will they be able to go to workshops and be the benefit of things being done at St. Vincent's or...
I don't know that we know exactly what those professional development opportunities will be, Mrs. Nows, but I certainly think that this provides us access to those resources. And I, I think one of our colleagues from St. Vincent's might could speak to that if you'd like to, or I can try to muddle through the answer as best I can. Will you come up to the podium? This is Beth Petrucci, and Beth, if you would, just give us your title so that I don't mess that up.
Beth Petrucci, and I'm the Director of Social Service and Community Outreach, which includes our school partnerships, and I've been in that role for about seven years with all our different districts that we've worked with. And Alyssa Atkins is our clinical supervisor of all of our nursing and healthcare staff in our schools. And what we're looking forward to in the future, in each of our districts, we have staff meetings once a month with all of our staff. Part of that meeting, it's usually an hour meeting, and that's all of the staff in that district or that school system. And in each of those meetings, we have operational issues we deal with, St. Vincent employee issues like when annual reviews are due, and practical things from the hospital, and then we spend some time on educational offerings at each of those meetings. Our hope is to kind of expand that, that every month when we do those, it's the same educational offering we provide at this district that we would do in another district, and kind of make that even bigger, even if that means that it's telecast to different school systems so the staff don't have to come off-site. So we're, we're very much in the thinking stage right now. We spend, at the beginning of the school year, before the schools start, we look at all of our school districts and determine when that is, back it up, have our staff come together, and we spend three days in orientation and training, not really orientation, but training, on the newest techniques in diabetes care in a school or asthma care, just a wide variety, and it's three full days of that education for our staff. So that happens at the beginning, but each month, we have an educational component, and Alyssa's already kind of working out that calendar for this coming year.
Beth, would our, would our existing nurses that weren't St. Vincent's employees have access to any of that professional development?
If that's how we wanted to set that partnership up, we can do that.
Okay, that's what my question.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Newman. I know we've had this for a couple of weeks, and the, our current nursing staff has known about this for, you know, longer than that. Have they had additional concerns or questions? Have those been able to be resolved? What type of rapport do we have with our current nurses about this transition?
Yes, that's a very good question. I actually spoke with Dr. Dillon just on the way here this evening, and to date, neither one of us administratively have had concerns raised by staff. That doesn't mean that they don't have concerns, it just means, and I don't know if any board members have had folks contact them either, but, I mean, I meant what I said two weeks ago, which is, we value the nurses that we have and have had. As a former principal, they were my right hand, and we have really good people in this district. And this proposal is for the four open positions that we have, and that is absolutely it. And we don't know what the next steps might be, but to your question, no, we haven't had concerns raised directly to me or Dr. Dillon, or apparently to the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions, discussion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor of supporting the contract with St. Vincent's for our open position nursing staff?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Thank you very much. Any board member reports? Dr. Teagarden?
No.
Okay. Well, then.
I'm all for setting records.
Making adjournments. Uh-huh. Record's set. Signed. Yay, all done. Okay. So Ryan, are you going to look at putting that in the contract then? Yeah. Okay, all right. Oh, I have to fill this in with my pencil.